I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is that correct?
Yeah. Good God, the given us the opportunity for our needs, I'm coming in. It helps us to make the right decisions that will benefit the people, not in the justice of your name, amen.
First item on the agenda is the consent.
Commissioner, this month.
Here.
Commissioner, Mr. Martinez. Mayor, Art, Reg, and Dev.
President.
Mayor, that's all.
First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Which we can vote on in a block. I'll read the consent agenda. If anybody wants to pull anything to discuss, please let me know. Approval of minutes, A. B is approval of police statistics. C is approval of financial update. D is approval of a resolution congratulating Stephanie Verdi of our army on her retirement from the San Antonio State Hospital after thirty years of service. E is approval of a resolution honoring Joe Zinkas of our army that passed this month at eighty-eight seven. And F is to designate thirty minutes prior to our next revenue meeting to take an official city vote. I just have questions on the financial update. What else? Want to pull any other items? If not, another can motion to adopt items one A, one B, one D, one E, and one F. Motion, second?
Second.
I'll say aye. Aye's have it. Those are approved. On the financial update, I noticed I had a couple of questions. Mainly overall revenues. Because I couldn't quite figure it out. That's the big difference from what you're using the format. What is our? That's my, I'm just getting to know it, but I'm sure it's mine. My main question was, so this is the, this is the third quarter update, right? So we have a long report here. What's the total revenues to be budgeted for versus what we've actually received? And are we on track?
So when we budgeted for what's on the board, we received eight point four.
What was it, the best before, right?
One point four.
And we received eight?
Eight point four. It's on the log in the first page.
That's part of mine. Start looking into details. Are there any line items that were of concern as far as us not being able to have enough financial control?
Expenses and revenues.
Expenses, expenses wise? Are any revenues, did they materialize on the way back?
Well, if I didn't got the income loss, we would have gotten out. Contract totally, I need to check in with your company. We wanted that sixteen thousand from them.
I mean, we built, we built more than that.
I asked the chief to pull all the vehicles that have been in companies in this way, or if we're fired, to check it again, so they give us. Um, if you're a sociopath, I don't even know if you're. Um, we don't intend to, probably do more than this.
Just two wrong numbers, so we put in sixty-one percent of our estimate. So we're a little bit short. But I personally think that our expenses on track, or they under the rule.
Well, some general fund that started with two.
So that one point four revenue was just, is that all revenue or just general fund?
Um, that's all revenue. We're all general funds, we're general funding. Um, we are still, um, under, on the, we projected one point three where it's something concerning.
All right, now, that was another question. Are there any other questions?
Each, each fine has its own statement first.
If there's no other questions, I'll enter another motion to the dossier financial report. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye's have it? Uh, agenda item number two, you discussed, and update on road maintenance within the city of Longmont.
Um, I, I thought, I didn't see, um, Commissioner Martinez, he was asking about, I did, was I going to get a hold of it? Um, we are in the process of, we were awarded the safety grants, safety grants. We're in the process of getting it awarded, um, as far as the paperwork that goes. And that specific grant is to deal with asset runs and life length. Um, as far as the street maintenance goes, the first two streets that we talked about was four months ago. And I was supposed to be putting together an estimated one actual construction reserve cost.
Yeah, I'm sure I did, but we've been on this for two years. I've been on the road.
Yes.
Ten, nine, or ten.
Right. Shouldn't be no hater.
And she's going to, surveys and all of those stuff. Yeah, it's, uh, what do you need to tell them, and what those, it's, so. That's, that's all we should cover, but just take it to a line.
Do you want to maybe give her deadlines? Or ask her for the next meeting, maybe give the presentation?
The main package?
I'll only say a motion that we can instruct senior here, here. Council, we can.
Don't say the actual item, so it's just for discussion and debate, but.
Okay, we can just ask her. Anything else on the agenda two? Number one, agenda item three, discuss and consider, and take possible action regarding trash littering and brush cleanup within the city of Longmont Army. That was my item. I asked the city manager to help us together a regular schedule for us to pick up trash, bandit signs, tire, whatnot.
Uh, yeah, we picked up the tires, um, we got to pick up. We're going to start picking up the bandit signs on Fridays. And then, um, I've got my public works, and we are going to try to do a brush pickup in July. So we're going to put out a schedule and try to do all one street a week, see how we can manage it. We've not done that before, so.
For like a brush?
Then we have storms, we have trees fall down, so just kind of go back and stuff. Not trash, just brush, but we do have the tiger bulk pickup on the last block as well. And that's a curtsy pickup, so they just have to come in, park in their house, and have to pick it up. As long as they're paying for their service and they don't plan anything that, um, prohibited. Like paintings or bad, I mean, those kind of things, they don't pick up, yeah.
You said, did, uh, the patrol, we, we, on Friday?
Yes, the bandit signs.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, just wanted to know if we could possibly have somebody here at the office for the brush pickup? Because last time we could not be able to clean it, and it was a fairly big mess. So I can ask them.
Sure. Okay, well, we'll do that. We'll, we'll leave the.
It's on Saturday.
Saturday. We'll do that, or nothing else?
The, the wall pickup is all Saturday night.
Yeah, where?
Yeah.
What day was that?
Uh, July twelve, Saturday. And we'd start at seven o'clock in the morning. And if they pass by, we'd hold them back. It's kind of be out when they pass by.
Well, we didn't have a, you know, last time, I don't know what happened last time, but it was stepped out for, for the weeks. So I think we need to talk to.
If, if the bill's not paid, they can hold it up.
Okay.
So that was something, yes.
Isn't the tiger a contract up this year?
Two, at least two, two or three years, it's a seven year contract. It's not really much.
Yeah. Anything else on the trash litter, brush cleanup? We're done to move on to agenda item four. Discuss an update of the city attorney regarding.
So we've been trying to get in touch with Spectrum about franchise fees. We've reached out multiple times, and then, of course, well, it's, you know, response. And so that's similar to what Valerie's experienced as well. Um, I mean, I don't know what the next step is, other than that, I don't know if we can pick it out, or how that works, but.
We citing for trespass, pump rebellion?
Yeah.
What we're doing? So I'm taking equal to everybody for internet bill. All right. Is there any other possible franchises?
It was suggested to us that we ask CPS for a one percent increase.
Is it all the same?
Yeah.
Well, no, we, we, we doubled it.
Did you?
Yeah, we had a, that's a big fight, uh, us and Loews got together. We had, I think it's a ten year contract that should be coming up, or just got renewed or something. Uh, anyway, they're, they're tender contracts. The issue we had is we're in a monopoly area, right? CPS is the only one that's provided. Most of the state has, uh, open market. There's like twenty providers you can pick from, right? Different prices. You want green energy, or you want whatever, you can pick. Uh, it's because of the nuclear company, they give them. So what we had to do last time was we looked at it, I think we only got like half cent, half percent. And, uh, we called the utility commission, to find out what was the statewide average. And that's what we requested. And CPS said no. And it was us, and Loews got together, and basically we told them, well, we're going to go to the legislature and ask to deregulate Fair County. If you can't have a monopoly on one hand, and then deny us at least the same average franchise fee. Can't vote, and then they kind of softened off, and then they gave us the same.
I think AT&amp;T's are turned out too. Um, and we don't have a franchise agreement with that.
Where was that AT&amp;T by the way, last? Uh, I don't know if you got the AT&amp;T, uh, maybe call the utility commission, and they can provide us the averages.
Yes, we're sorry to, though, you know, but, but what happened with the PA system? I can't hear.
Oh.
I can't hear you.
I don't.
You're the one who don't, I can hear.
I'm hoping that I was going to, I don't think so. Do we have PA too? We have.
We speak up. We speak up.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, okay, so then we'll speak up. Let's do that, and then I guess we need to find out when it expires, or follows it through the ten year contract. And I know the last time, the way we kind of organized it was through the council cities. Okay, because all, because all the square cities have the same contract. And I guess maybe contact AT&amp;T. What about Starling? That's what I, I mean, they do franchise. Technically, they don't need to run away with it. Can't hurt.
They're worth it.
Yeah, especially if you public airways, so maybe contact Starling.
I think that, these, perhaps you might get, they jump like this. Like, oh, the gas prices. All the prices, why not? Oh, gas is cheap when I'm in a good state.
Right. Uh, the original tiger contract, they weren't allowed to raise anything without council approval. We had to cap on it, and now we're about to know that gas prices are so great, we're worried about the gas.
They even raised our rates for the city.
We'll get it out, I know, uh, yeah, it's on the agenda, but we'll talk about it next time. We need to talk more about it. I think we have some options. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number five. Discuss, consider, and take possible action regarding an environmental assessment of motor parts needed within the city limits.
So lots of listening, what they've been working on.
What this was, was, uh, asked the city to go and look for any kind of environmental issues, whether it's dump sites, uh, areas where there's frequent, you know, and even in our EJ, right? So that, that environment would impact us, where you had those tires on the bus office with all the rain, and freezing mosquitoes, our kids are out there waiting for the bus. And if it's not actually in the city, maybe we pick this council commissioner and have them address it. I know there's a lot of dumping on the creek right there by Trey Walter, with a ton of dumping on Evans Road, which is just right outside of our city limits, uh, but even within the, the city. And so, we're seeing if we need to either address, use cameras up for this, or. And I know we have current enforcement deals, but, uh, do we have, or can we do something like that, maybe we can put together a list of known dump sites or areas? We can then.
Keep an eye on it, yeah.
Either keep an eye on, or ask, see if the county can help us with something structural, I don't know, either. If there's anything, there's going to keep up with it.
Um, we went to training last weekend, it turns into a coffee machine pretty easily, and it gets to a felony pretty quickly too. If there's batteries, or.
Yeah.
Motor oil, tire, it gets to a felony pretty quick too, so.
Well, we used to, we used to open the trash and look for mail.
Yeah.
I would call people and say, come pick up your trash. Have the time to do it. What about, I mean, I appreciate the, the list of, the curve, but I think we need to have some kind of kind of, or maybe we can bring it back up a little bit more. A map of the city with those environmental stuff, just kind of. Anybody knows a bit easier?
Would you have one with one more street? Probably, we need to check to get the water off, and, and fair down.
Collateral destruction. Yeah, see, I mean, they don't have any more security, they don't do any forceps things already, and so it's just a matter of. If, it could come to a point where y'all are going to have to front along expenses for these things, especially with like a condemnation, and y'all are going to front that, and, you know, probably never going to do that. And so it's a matter of what you're willing to take on and pay for.
Right.
But especially with the dumping, I know you can get on there to mitigate it. I don't know if you can gain access to prevent others from accessing it, especially if they're accessing these dump sites from existing public programs.
Right.
So.
As far as the condemned building, does the city have a lien on the property?
The house is.
And it's, uh, hundreds of trucks. The back is a house and a truck. It's a legitimate, um, health nuisance, public health nuisance. So that gives us more. Yeah, it gives us more weight, um, but it's also criminal charges and moving right. Contact the local property services. So, other than going ahead and getting a court order to tear it down, I don't know. Or getting a court order to go in and do a maintenance, clean it up, where it's rats and snakes and everything.
You know, those houses on there, they're over there. This came up, in Euro City Council. There's a creek back there.
Yeah.
Nothing's been done.
The other thing we need to realize, is that you put funds aside and gave grants, you know, grants. Uh, maybe that's something else I'd like to look into, because we're, I know we're sending enforcement letters, and not everybody can do it, and I know you can't clean up everybody's, but if we can make, uh, ten, three thousand dollars, you have to approve vendors, and last time we rented back those and roll offs and actually addressed certain dump sites or issues. Some things are beyond fair, but if it's, if it's a trash heap or dump, you know, at least we can offer, uh, it does benefit everyone who does clean up. Especially the ones that are plugging the waterways. Live Oaks really has, still, all the way, uh, and the, and the, uh, I don't know if it's still there, but there was a massive map, one and quarter. Where the detention pond was and all that, I mean, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so can we get a map, uh, just kind of identify non-dumping sites? Whether it's, maybe, and within EJ, for the past miles, that's the, uh, you can start with a map.
No, we won't go that out, but cheap when I'm solders. Actually, some, some places like that, I don't know. They, so I can find.
Is, is, do we have any, uh, where would be the logical place to budget the funds for environmental work? Do we have a range of that we might want to look for, like, you know, like twenty thousand, you can offer maybe twenty-five hundred dollar grants, or something like that?
Could.
Right here. Well, how about this, uh, maybe entertain a motion, have the city administrator put together for the next meeting, uh, simple grant program, possible funding source, we can discuss details and possibly. A plan.
Put the grants.
Or environmental. Did you make the question?
Yes, I did.
The second question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Question passes. Six, discuss, consider, and take possible action on formal code enforcement agreement between the city and City One Army. This came back, I've had several folks, uh, I know that the, the city's doing code enforcement, they received letters. Uh, they felt that, um, they needed more time, or some people say, well, hey, it's my business. Uh, and so what I was trying to do with this is to say, rather than having our, our police officers, intimidating some people, I mean, police officers and court system, allowing some type of agreement to be entered into, where someone could come in and say, okay, I might have five cars, but it's there, you know, I can remove one a month, or I can, you know, and then be into a formal agreement, so we can stop legal, you know, unless they violate the agreement. Is that something that can be done?
I don't know, I, I would think the primary driving force behind somebody insuring to an agreement is the threat of the ticket at the end of the day. And so without that kind of driving force, I don't know what the enforcement mechanism would be, without, I mean, then re-involving the police and.
Could that be done through the court then?
But we can, we can set up a deferral agreement like that, along these code enforcement matters, to give them time, and, and generally, I mean, the direction I've gotten in the past, when dealing with code enforcement, that we're more concerned with getting the problem fixed than getting the five hundred bucks.
Sure.
And so, as long, I'm, I'm happy to give them more time and to work with them to get it done, rather than take their money and then say, same, we'll cite you again next month. So, I will continue to be lenient on that, and willing to make deals and work out a brand for them.
I've had someone, if that's specific, I've had someone say, hey, I don't have junk cars, I can work on cars. And I know I need to do A, B, and C, but I can do one of the other, I can remove this, or I can, you know. So I want to be able to tell people, because they, they come today, I feel, I think, they don't know that necessarily, that you're not, you're making concerns. So I want to be able to say, in form, to go talk to.
Go talk to prosecutor.
Go talk to prosecutor, you know, the top, right, if they can enter good agreement, it's reasonable, and if you don't follow it, then the, the prosecution will resume. Is there, is, is there a way that, if, I guess we can say, if you do send out another letter, whatever, that we put a paragraph or something that explains that, like, you know, if you want to enter for the agreement, or you want to, you know.
We'll work with.
We'll work with you, please call Jacob.
I'm also working with the.
Or, yeah, whatever makes sense, because that's so people know that it's not like.
It's not, it's not short.
I have people legitimately think, well, hey, you're going to take my house away because I have X wires, you know, like, no, 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 you can go and talk to somebody, and if you agree, so, and I haven't read the letters, so if anything, something like that already, that obviously could be clarified.
You can do it to me, it's all good.
All right. Yeah, we can do that, and both. Instruct people to. All right. Anything else on six? If not, we'll move on to agenda item seven. Discuss, consider, and take possible action regarding a citizen zoning board in all matters related thereto. About, we had, we had, I discussed this with Val a little bit, uh, our current zoning board is through the council, right? And so, I know I heard some concerns with residents, they have to have some input. I think Valerie said that there may have been some statutory changes. But I'd like to see if it's possible for us to maybe appoint one or possibly two citizens to sit when we're sitting at the zoning board, just so we have a resident's perspective, maybe a resident, one business owner, or something like that. So when we're discussing things like, whatever, flats, or some, wherever people are coming and asking for things, uh, we have more. And if we had two, then we're still the majority of the, of the committee, but we have some.
We're waiting, we, we went to all this for a lot of years.
Okay.
And then we, we put all the pieces out there.
Yeah.
They hold it on, and we send out, notice over, we send back, and if we would have approved it, or not approved, or something like that. Do they know that?
No, I'm not talking about changing ordinance, I'm just saying, let's say we have, somebody who comes in and wants to build something. Like, I want to put in a, something bad, an oil refinery, right? But, and we have to sit there and make the decision, we're going to, are we going to change the zone, the zoning to allow it? Are we going to give them a variance? When we make those decisions, we'll have two community members come up with us, and they can ask questions, and they can have their perspective as well. It's not, I'm not talking about the actual rules, just if we approve, uh, a review, the.
We, we were told that there's only rules, something to change, I mean, that can all change.
Right, right.
So you're talking about if they're requesting a, like, a zoning change, or.
Okay.
Or land development industry.
Right.
What, what do you think is bringing it down to do?
Well, we do send out public notice. We have, well, I think, what is it, within five, five miles of.
Two hundred feet of your property.
So, so like, for instance, with the K and I, so that was a, a, a specifically current.
Right.
So I can see people wanting input in that.
I mean, I would, I know y'all can appoint your own zoning board, and each one of y'all is a particular point one citizen. I've never seen it, was it combined like that, where y'all have selected, named, appointed on the same board?
You're right, I only brought that up because we thought that there may have been a special, like, C city, yeah. Well, yeah, that's the traditional way, that's the other way to do it, is we all appoint somebody. And that's the first board they get, and it's just an advisory. So that the, the citizens, you know, hear it, and then they make a recommendation to the council. Yeah, and we can follow the recommendation, or we can modify it, or we can ignore it. But at least they're able to go through, be part of the process, ask the question. Sometimes people might raise up that we're not, you know. Now, just hold the process down a little bit, that's the other, how we have to do one more, you know, process to go.
Do you think that the process should be done this, that, I mean, to hit the ones who take care of all this?
Sure. Yeah, well, I agree, I mean, uh, the brand is there to advise us, to explain what's there. But sometimes people are asking for a, a var. a variance, meaning like, uh, to go against the rule, and that's really our decision as a council, but as a community. Brandon could just say, you know, we set that rule in place because of A, B, C, but sometimes that doesn't always match the, the project. So, I think Brandon should, you know, or whoever the city planner is, could be part of the process, he, he can give his opinion. Uh, but what I'm just trying to do is, a lot of the feedback I got from the residents was that they would like to have more, either voice or representation.
Well, it counts, I guess, not, I think, but the boards can approve.
Oh, yeah, 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 even with the, without proposing, the council makes the final decision, it just adds that up.
So like, the way this explains, the way we've done it now, is we, we have separate meetings, right? So you have a meeting where y'all are acting as zoning commission, and then y'all come back and, you know, two weeks later, a month later, y'all have a meeting, we have a board commission. So y'all are still technically getting two different times on the same project. Is this way, if y'all decide to appoint zoning commissioners, and somebody else, your appointee would go to that first meeting to hear it, and then y'all would still have the final say when it comes for final approval.
And you're welcome to appoint yourself or serve by yourself, everybody will have an opportunity.
I don't have a problem.
Where do you have it?
Just along with really talk about, you know.
No, absolutely, we can, we can have the final decision.
There's a change. There's a, that's a state. No, exactly where I would can.
We know that just not anybody can help in there.
And, and I'll be honest, we tried this ten years ago, and after, like, three or four meetings, the people, they lost interest, we ended up going back to the board, but I think, it means different act, so I'm just saying.
Yeah.
So we go to try it, and it didn't work, go back to the way we, so, uh.
You have a trial.
Like, huh?
You have a trial.
You have a trial, yeah. Sunset it and review it. Want, want to, uh, I'll take a motion to instruct the city attorney to bring up proposed ordinance for the next meeting to allow, uh, the council to appoint a citizen representative to the zoning commission, and we could sunset it after a year, six months. That means we can review it, and if it works, we can permanently, not go back.
We might have a motion.
Okay. You have a motion, we have a second. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Muches terries. Agenda item number eight, uh, discuss considering take possible action regarding the city impound lot. I brought this up, uh, my concern with the, was, is with the location of the impound lot, I know we're close to, to, to building it, uh, but I wanted to have a discussion, because once we build it, it's there forever, and, uh, I know, uh, you know, heard some concerns from residents as well, that if we build it here in the park area, you know, we're putting kind of an industrial or a whatever kind of use in what otherwise should be our recreational area for the community. And I, that was my first impression too when I heard it, so I wanted to kind of figure out, is, is there any interest in looking at possible other location, and we've been playing over there by the river, by the, by the billboard, that's not very usable, but a good place for that. Uh, I had always envisioned maybe putting, you know, soccer field or something recreational. But I don't want to be done, it's gonna be too expensive to move it, so, uh, others, is there any other?
The only thing is, like, the, the three beach lines for the building, they run back there, that's where the subject comes up?
Okay.
Um, what's the one thing?
How much acres is that?
It's directly behind the building, yeah.
And where exactly would be the impound?
And then we, we, today, we spent about thirty dollars on the plan. So, I mean, we could build, like, plant trees, make a barrier, where it's not such an eyesore. It's, it's y'all's choice.
Well, absolutely. I, I, I'm not saying not build an impound lot, I was just asking.
A question area.
Is that the best place to put it, or is that gonna be the?
We always start here, then, then we're almost good. But it's possible.
Yeah.
And we do have a lot of money invested in it.
Right.
And I put the invoices in the packet.
Okay. Uh, what, what that doesn't show is the impound lot relative to the whole.
I think we have the.
There is, that was, uh, way back, uh, where the, uh, what did, what did we call it? Go back there.
Oh, uh, uh, no, the.
The judgment pond.
No, that's.
Going back that way.
Yes, it's, yes, it's behind, it's on Tolu Horse, um, it's the north side, okay. There's a pond there.
Do you have a construction plan for this?
This is the same as what you had earlier.
I have one less likely development plan and one less construction plan, this one's a construction one.
But where does the construction supposed to begin, you know?
Well, it hasn't began because we didn't like it, so I'm not doing, so you don't need to do.
Right. So where's your blue building?
So it's directly behind the building, and the corner goes to the fence, the ground there a little bit. And it's, it's not a whole, it's. Yeah, so the building.
Away. So it's not even all the way to the back?
No, and then we, we didn't get all the trees down, we left the barrier, so.
And what does that exactly, like, lower the water?
Yeah, so that's the, the tree grate, and so we could put a port in to drive the, we would gain a lot, and so we're on each line. No, not here.
And would we set it all to the here?
Yes, yes, because, uh, I have a chance to get those leaves, you know, to see where it's here.
Hey, did they stake it? Was it good visual? And then maybe.
I could have probably like staked it, yeah.
Man, I'm just saying, you, the way thirty thousand as well, but, I don't know, you're gonna pull back or?
No, 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 no.
This was smaller there.
It's not a huge impound lot, it's just, I think, they said about twenty-five percent max, it's not a huge thing.
And we'll never enough.
Hold on, we could, but, um.
For example, if you're pretty busy, or you're a small city, but current, what would be the maximum amount? Revenue.
It, I mean, it depends on how busy it is, or.
I mean, you got.
Other cities are, are ten, I mean, twenty percent, yeah.
Well, we have a report of, of this town, do you remember? Do we know what the average impound fee is?
I, I, well, the average impound fee. So right now, we're only getting twenty-five percent, we're not getting full fees, so like, the average impound was twenty-three dollars, plus the evidence fee, plus the storage fee, um, and if we have the impound lot, we're collecting all those fees, minus paying the tow truck, they're twenty-five feet. So, right now, we're only getting twenty-five percent.
This is quite a bull.
Which is way more than we were getting with the previous contract, but it's less than we get for the operating impound.
Just figure thirty thousand in the, after every, thirty thousand on the.
If, if it's busy, you know, there should be a work bag, soft exits, right on the highway, super busy, lots of impound, lots of smoke on them, so it's kind of, I don't want to say comparable.
Could other areas be, like, does Somerset have an impound?
Well, Somerset does have an impound, but, I mean, we could allow others to be. That, that's a voice of the building, so.
I don't know if y'all are aware of this, but we have, uh, tow trucks going up and down Benton City all hours of the night. There's, uh, they're on Benton City Road and Jackal, uh, there's all kinds of tow trucks. So if, if, you know, we need the revenue to justify that.
Right.
You know, you might talk to some of these other people, because those tow trucks are gone all hours.
Right. In what order they go?
Right, if you, right there were Jackal and Benton City, if you make that right on Benton City, there's a couple, you can see them in there. If you go straight, uh, there's, there on Jackal, and if you make the right on Rockport, there's another, uh, place that has several tow trucks in there.
So in May, there was thirty vehicles though?
Last month.
It was about thirty, uh, previous month was like fifty-two.
So the, the barriers, right?
Yeah.
If you did like.
Plus, with the crash vehicles, a lot of times the insurance companies will leave it for three or four weeks, and they come pick it up for a new check, or they let she just auction it off, so. A lot of money made off crash vehicles.
And the bigger trucks.
Not even the bigger trucks. The bigger trucks are, are more cheap.
We get a crash.
Oh. Yeah.
But, but no, it is not the entire, like, back, it's just this small portion directly behind the building.
But maybe you could.
No, no, it's, it's.
Well, you, you, you might, you might just one month, maybe have us take it out, or you'll get it next week, whatever.
It's, it's y'all's choice, so if that's what you want, of course.
Why, why don't we put it over there off the thirty mile? That's the, the animal shelters and, uh, impound. Because down there on, uh, was, here, Walter Lane, uh, what's her name, that has a same current there? My cousin sold his property because it was so bad for the dog. I understand they're saying it's just a few dogs, but what have we talked about in the future? You know, we don't know what, what, you know, how big it's gonna, gonna get, end up getting, end up staying with the, the impound.
Right.
If it ends up getting really big, well, then what, you know, and then up, like we said, that concrete versus, really, having tiny bit.
Is there a, yeah, I wasn't here, so, I wonder, maybe we asked, but, but is that property considered? What was the, and was there a reason why we didn't consider it?
Yeah, they didn't consider it to be a food truck.
Okay, yeah. Take your weight.
You know, but.
No, it's not okay. And they're not, they're not gonna stay here, they're not gonna make any money.
It, it's awkward to get to. That's, that's the other thing, is, I mean, you have, you can have, like, the food trucks on, uh, sixty oh four is very fine, you can, you can go in and out, they got the trucking, parking, and.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a, I'm just saying, if, if, if there was a, it's not in a floodplain, right? I know it's right by the river, but it's not a floodplain.
It is, it's a mansion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, a, a grand majority of it is floodplain, so whatever we put there, it's supposed to be temporary, it can be pulled out, I mean, we can put a park there, kind of thing, um.
We do have to, whatever.
But we have to, we have to own it. I'm saying, no, I'm saying we can't sell it, but in terms of, uh.
Yeah.
We have to keep it.
Yeah, it was, it was good to.
Well, in perpetuity, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Change for that billboard. I mean, it could be a government company. How about this, is there a way that the public works and stake this out? And then maybe do an equivalent stake over there, so we can get a general, and maybe ask Ida, what would it cost to have, you know, so we know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be another thirty thousand, maybe she can do it for less. Just to pick up, because, I mean, once we build it today.
It's gonna go, and you can normally, especially with friends, likes, you know, something, something that's running. And over here, everyone's shit. And that's like, I don't know, be there or something.
We gotta do something to add anyway.
Jumpyard dog. Plus, they have a control. Trying to get the Jumpyard Dog. Well, we, showing up a month, or at least take it out, and now we can talk to Ida a little bit about some of those kinds. You're right about that, if we have to, if we have to run the water, I mean, it could be, that could be our great, run the water. I don't know if we're the electrician.
Well, there's electricity because we just had an agreement with SARS, they had to put it easily through it, so part of our agreement is we get a time for that.
For water?
No, for water, but there's not water over there.
CPS, right?
I'm sorry, CPS, yeah, sorry.
So you, you need to surround, that's a process, so, if Microsoft.
And there's a, there's a busted septic tank, right, right outside our property line? Yeah, I thought it was ours, and so we were going through the process of how we cleaned it up, and then CPS actually accidentally did a survey on our property, and so luckily, the property line is right before the busted sewer, the septic tank.
So it's the, it's the road?
It's towards the shell, right behind the concrete.
Okay.
Right after the tree.
Right.
Even the shell, uh.
Oh, the shell, the bottle?
The sewer runs back.
Me too.
The.
The septic tank in the back of the shell, and then the ladder will stick back there.
I, I said landmark, you throw the shell, and they sold gas stations, but they kept that, that's why they, they, they put those concrete barriers. They kept that in the billboard, and we got the land to the river. But I think there's three orders of landmark, and I forget the name, it's called real fun, so. Uh, let, let, okay, let's just bring it back, if they'll stake it out, we'll confirm where the utility is, and it might, it might be economically feasible, whatever, but then everyone can see, from what value we're showing, we actually does, uh.
And it's not very.
Isolated on the side over there, so.
Yeah, it's, it's right on the edge of our property, it's not very good.
If you think about the wall, maybe you're a little, if you're a little, those are the cracks.
Yes, but not more, those would have to go to.
Okay, so we'll bring, bring that back. Uh, alright, agenda nine, discuss, if considering take possible action regarding signage of thirty-five, and request to check up and a designation for Bon Army. This is the, the green sign on the interstate, when you come, uh, north, it, it says sixteen oh four Summer Section. It needs to say Bon Army, and I think they need to say Bon Army, you know, against two exits, so they know both of, you know, and.
I brought that up.
Yeah, we need to contact the district engineer, because they're from sides of all time, and, uh, they need to get it in the queue, uh, for that, I don't know, have we, have we changed, or have we made contact before?
I had them change at San Antonio sign once, and they came and they changed it, and then they put it back to what it was. That was, that was some years ago. That was twenty eighteen.
Uh, alright, well.
I know we can't ask.
Uh, yeah, we can just have a little letter, the council says they need, they need a proper sign there, uh, that's something to say there.
And more. We also need to.
Do I ask the, they can sign it, uh, right there in front of my house, uh, the entrance to the track? There's that yield sign, and we have quite a few accidents there, but people from the area, well, they know that sign there, and there's the yield. There are a lot of people who come from other places and don't realize, you can't take out with the, the, uh, yield sign with the question like.
Okay, yes.
And I think it come out of.
Signs here, on the road, and something like that.
Yeah, that's, you have to roll, you have to roll.
Same game on Benson Road and thirty-five.
So the reason we didn't fix that sign is because we're gonna tear the road up anyway, so we're gonna fix it, and use the road, yeah. Could you write with the, a white warning bar in front of the stop sign? Or as a corner, I mean.
And move the sign. Find it.
Sorry?
And move the sign.
It's not our sign.
The, the stop sign?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, yeah.
We'd have to ask for a county, because it's not out of the.
Well, let's ask, and somebody's gonna get teed over there.
I agree.
You stop, and then you take off, and then you stop again, because you can't leave the end of the road. And the one on, on Benson City Road and, uh, thirty-five.
That side told me if we change another one of their arms.
No, that's.
Whoa, 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 right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's out of the question. Okay, uh, and after meeting, I, I think we need to meet with the district engineer. Obviously, you got a, your office, that's the person in charge, our section.
He's the one who showed us.
Yeah, the body of duty, the meeting, or we can post an agenda, and we can. Yeah, the body of duty to be obedient or we can post an agenda and we could, at a time, but it's really important. I mean, for economic, we need people to know that their property is gonna fall over. From both ways, north, south, thirty-five, eight, sixteen oh four, uh, they need to have advance notice, yeah. Or ahead, uh.
Now, excuse me. Yeah. Were you talking about the one forty-one exit here? Where all the, the trees are at the forest, is there a, now that's a dangerous spot.
Yeah.
We've got several accidents there, um, officer, you know what's going on talking about. Tech Stop, I don't know what we talked to and we'll come back, or the stakes in charge of that? But some of them trees have to come out. Somebody's gonna get killed if they haven't got a kill.
They've been running.
Uh, they, they said no. Uh, Clay Forest got into your two bushes.
It's a blind spot.
They told us they're gonna. Tech Stop, they, they, um, district engineer, that's why I'm coming down here, because we changed the sign. And I told somebody who's gonna die because of those trees. And he's a three-year contract, that's why I have no place, and from the plan, we're away and I touch it, they're not gonna change it, so.
They, they.
I, well, that's because the commissioner of forests got it.
We're getting moved, yeah.
Yeah.
Excuse me, is that right? Uh, how, excuse me, how long was that? When you talked to, was that the state or Tech Stop?
Really, that's right, yeah.
State?
Yeah, you just asked me reference, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I was signed up to speak for that, but I don't have a speaker. That's why we're on the signs over, I thought I'd bring that up.
It's been about three years though, right?
No, this was after Casey got elected, um, so maybe a year ago.
Well, okay, let's invite him, you know, get him good early, but we can drive him.
All the things.
Yeah, and we can, we can stage it, someone can come in, we can almost have. I didn't see him. His car started beating maybe like. We do, uh, and I, I know it's a long, long curve, but, you know, you drive, you see the bridges that are beautified, and that's all on us.
Well, that we have, we have requested about painting, um, the bridge, yeah. So now we have started that process, talking to.
Okay, well, all right, so we'll pour back inside it, hopefully we'll get some info, let's find it down. Have a meeting to talk about all the different signage issues. Uh, agenda ten, discuss, consider taking possible action to update the day and time of the regular monthly meeting for commissioners. Uh, I put this on there because I had a conflict with the E S D five meeting, which was the same time. And just wondering if anyone expected to do it in the second quarter, like instead of the first quarter.
Move that here.
All right, well, yeah, okay, you guys still have a meeting? Six thirty-five?
Change it to the.
Second Thursday.
We'll do your work.
Thank you. All right, now I'll attend a motion that we change the regular monthly meeting to the second Thursday of the month as six thirty.
Make a motion that we change to the, regularly change to the second Thursday of the month at six thirty, six thirty here.
Uh, all papers out?
Aye, aye.
All right, twelve, discuss, uh, consider taking action regarding business permits and the business permit ordinance and all matters with their two. I'm just, okay, we'll go back to eleven. Uh, discuss, consider taking possible action regarding an automated messaging system. Uh, I should have made the report for R. Uh, I know we had, we had admitted that text system. I've been informed now that the contract is fired with a review. Basically, I, I'm trying to come up with a better way to communicate. That's challenging. Some people need, you know, mail, print mail, they don't do electronic. Other people like myself, I'd rather get emailed or a text. Uh, and so I don't, the question is, how can we maybe, but more effectively communicate with residents or have a sign up? Where we get a consistent email, uh, where the agenda's posted, emailed out, everyone requested, uh, that that's.
So I found a free mask and also some to try, but forgot to send it for, and then, um, we're gonna send out or. Like we safari, it's one, it's hard. Uh, we're gonna make a postcard, like a contract card, we'll do one's an English one by dispatch. Of how people want to be contacted and so we can try that out.
Good. I wonder if you could partner with like Ask Us a Water or somebody to slip it in the bill. I'll see that for a couple of months, like, is it possible? I know they have postcards, but, uh, we are on, you know, to get more people to sign up. Uh, and also reduces our postage costs, about fifty-seven cents.
When we, when we send out postage, we get a hundred, hundred fifty dollars returned every time.
So we've heard of this, but it's about virtually.
Yeah.
Uh.
We use the most current, as per the CAD mailing addresses.
But on the tax roll. Um.
Do you have a couple of other signs or just letters or?
Uh, I, I was just saying, like, I, I know, most people are, they don't think about the city, right? They're just running their lives, raising their families and therefore a lot of people are, are not aware of what's going on. And I know in the past, last time, you know, ten years ago, we would mail everything. Uh, but these days, most people say, hey, I'd rather get a text, I'd rather get an email. No, even just, just to know that something happened, or when we pass the minutes, you know, they can just kind of passively follow it. And they'll show up when there's an issue that they want. Uh, and other cities have that, uh, I just wanted to see if we could do something more effective. And reduce our costs for postage and mailing, so some people, yeah, uh, they don't like email. That's fine, and we can, we can mail, you know, a hundred letters, but if you go from five hundred to a hundred, that saves us a lot of postage. Uh, or if someone complains, we can say, we'll just get on the email list, on the website, on the main page, sign up, but then we have to make sure we actually do it. Right, with having, uh, an agenda posted or at the, I like to see agendas emailed out, or I don't, I don't know if the system you saw allows it to pick. What they can get, or is that too?
Uh, this is just a, I create an email, it goes out to a mass list. Um, it's up, it's free, so I'm sure there are more, like robust options, but.
Are we gonna know that? Yeah, I mean, uh, I mean, these agendas, or if we can pass any ordinance, fire it out, we're gonna know, here's the rules for this. Uh, we might not get a lot of feedback, but I think it was one-way, uh, person, since we got rid of the text system, people might say, well, what can I have? We don't have any.
To, to be honest, most of the people that signed up for the text system were out in Seattle.
Oh, really?
It was a lot of Boston Road, Palo Alto, Ohio sixteen, mostly.
Right.
That didn't work very well with the survey, they need two hundred, four hundred people.
Right.
It's still in the.
Well, that's true, but.
You won't complete surveys.
Yeah.
Good, I think they actually.
But I'm talking about here, our communication to the public. Uh. And when an issue does arise, the first thing people say is, well, you didn't tell me. And I want to be able to say, well, we can fix that, go straight, sign up right here and you'll get everything else from now on, right? Because I know we're not gonna get everybody magically, but if it's free or very low cost, we can keep it up there.
Did you see, I, I've, uh, signed up a couple of times, but I signed up, well, here, a couple of months ago. And I got a couple of texts, they've been nothing else, yeah. So it doesn't work.
Right.
It's happening now? No, well, it would happen.
The contract expired, there were so few people signed up, it wasn't renewed. Uh. Yeah, well, let's do this, if you think, oh yeah, it's just an email collector, you made an email out of stuff, sorry. Uh.
Now, the last newsletter was the headline information.
Yeah.
Well, you put it out like that, but then a lot of people don't get the newsletter either.
I stopped getting it, I don't know why.
What's?
Actually, I think I've figured.
Uh. Do you think we need to look for other systems or do you think that email?
Well, we could try it and see what kind of response we get, kind of, I mean, we spent seven thousand dollars on our text system over two years and people don't.
Well, let's try the free email, everybody.
And then, I mean, if that's successful, that's something that people get, like getting a more robust system. And this one also has a text option, so I can try that and see how it goes.
Maybe we just send out, uh, agendas and whatever we.
Whatever notice, yeah.
Public notices or bids or whatever. Yeah, you get everything or you, that's a start. All right. And, uh, and we can put that aside on the front page of the pitch, website. Uh, all right, now I'll attend a motion that we try the free, uh, email system and have the admin or darks email there, we can get all public notices to the email list.
I can motion you, like, we, we just, uh. We're just saying, we're, uh, we're on that.
The motion we have second, all papers out. Professor Carries, uh, now under twelve, discuss, consider taking possible action regarding business permits and the business permit ordinance and all matters with the two. Uh, you may, you may have gotten it, I know I got a business permit notice around the first of the year. And then I know there were some pickups and so just want to get a status update or what we need to do.
Do you have the original ordinance?
The business permit ordinance? I can look for it.
Cause I have half of it. I don't have the whole ordinance, so I only have half of it. So I've been researching other ordinances, um, but I, I don't have anything like completely put together to give y'all, um. I'm trying to come up with something that is easy for people on the fan, that does what it needs to do without being too burdensome. Um, and so we've kind of not really endorsed the business permit thing this year, um. I just wanna come up with a better way to do it.
I don't, obviously our other one was very basic, it's off the top of my head, I remember.
It was pretty detailed. It had a pretty detailed breakdowns, because I have the beginning of it, um, but that don't have, I don't know how it ends or what we're trying to do.
I recall we had all the, like, the health, like, you had a restaurant, obviously you have the health, the health inspection, we had all that. And then I thought we were just, we were mainly looking to make sure they had their self-type permits.
It had a breakdown by how many employees are at the business and that's where it cuts off that. Um, so.
I don't know, Woody has that?
I would, I would try to complete the version.
I might figure that out.
Well, it is, it's one of the original ordinance, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll bring it back, we just have a, more of a long-term thing, I just wanted to start that conversation. Uh, discussion update regarding the animal control facility.
Uh, we have our inspection on, I mean, I.
And if we pass that inspection.
Um, we have to get the committee for nobody to. We have the inspection, we can start it.
That's, that's, that's also need to direct the committee.
Yes.
That's if we take the meeting and we cooperate, we'll pass the inspection.
Well, we have to have a vet oversee it, so that's part of the committee, but yes, once, once it gets inspected and passed, we're, we're pretty much good to go. Except we, whatever administrative thing we have to do, but that's the big hurdle.
What's it, act, like, with capacity?
Capacity, I mean, we have the one rabies kennel, one sickle kennel, and then like two regular dog kennels, and we have two cat kennels. It's not a huge thing. It's just a seventy-two hours, seventy-two hours, they're clean, they're not clean, they're put down. Now, it's, it's sound ugly, it's not a long-term facility, it's not an appeal facility, but you cannot afford that, you know what I mean? So this, their out ordinance, I believe, are in the seventy-two hours, it's considered abandoned, and we can put it down when we're along.
I, I know some dogs are gonna be adopted. I mean, we have a process where we're gonna offer it to some rescues first or, or like.
If we give it to dog, they'll be the twenty dollars. So they're charging us two hundred dollars for dog, when you take them, but they don't. Um, there is another local rescue off, offset that we work with that tries to get dogs adopted out. We've got some dogs adopted, we had a, what, like ten, twelve puppies? We, we got, we got to Houston, we got it adopted out in Houston, so it's not like, it's not like.
I, I'd say, right, so we have our, like, six puppies. Did they go up my kennel? Is that, is that what?
So if they're the same litter, they're, know each other, they could go in the same kennel, if they're not, or their sizes are all happy, it was separate. Um, but things like that, we can try to adopt them out of it. Um, we put on Facebook, we can, we can try.
What about, uh, what does it cost us to put man down?
It's eighty dollars.
That's how you put it on?
Yeah. As where we kept two dogs. For, you don't wanna know, with like four days, seventy-three dollars, I mean, we cannot afford to keep them one hundred. We just can't, we can, we can try to get them adopted out, we can try to get them to another rescue, but ultimately, like, basically, like, it's just not sustainable.
Now, what about, I don't have, are we gonna talk about that with the chipping machines or?
Uh, I had five dogs today.
You had what?
We had five, we chipped five dogs today.
Five dogs?
Yeah.
So that's, so that's part of the process, we pick up an animal, we, we scan it, or chip it?
Yes.
Is, is it, what if the owner not welcome with it?
If it's got a chip, we can find them and we can work them out.
Contact the person.
Yes. Um, and then like that is a free service that the department offers to the public. Uh, we can chip it and then subdue the owner to get it registered and all that, but, um, yeah, if it's got a chip, we'll, we'll do our best to find it.
Uh, what it used to be is it's still, uh, all animals have to be fenced or tied.
Well, the tie thing has changed, cause they changed a lot.
Can't, can't be tied up anymore, you have to be fenced, shitty and war, so. The general was just fenced, as long as they're not out on the street, they're on the public right of, then we can.
I think they can be tethered as long as it's quite a time, so we can get them out in, um, next week, water.
And cats, which are a lot of cats.
We will take them.
Well, I mean, they're wild animals. They're wild, but I mean, we do get a lot of complaints about cats in certain areas of the city, so it was more about, I think, to.
Would you pick up all the, all dogs?
But, but everybody knows needs to be aware, Bear County's having a problem with rabies right now, so we do need to be careful. I think they have twelve or fourteen animals that's positive in Bear County.
I've seen a lot of foxes there.
Yes.
Drought or the rabies. So, yeah, so are we, are we, are we gonna, like, how, how do we address the animal control? Is it gonna be somebody reports, can we go out, are we gonna have a regular?
All of the, both. I mean, if I have to get a psycho hot dog and go catch dogs myself, I'll be, whatever needs to be done, I don't want people getting bit.
We have a, maybe we're gonna have a popular, a policy for that or just?
Well, the place of our example.
So, so, so every, every officer.
But I am a peace officer too, so it's like a way of how we thought.
Right, I mean, does somebody have a certification?
We're, as peace officers, we can enforce, help take, go on whatever, without the animal control, that's usually the.
About liability, that, that's what officers get.
Liability issues, they do recommend, they take the class.
We have a permit, we take the class, we have all these in place, we, I think we provided, the city has purchased protective material and so.
We got kevlar gloves, we got catch poles, um, I'm looking at cages and or traps more toward the end of the year. Um, we can look for the animal control class. Um, I know when Chief Perez was here, we were trying to get jumped into a Bear County class, it never really worked out. And then also there is the rabies vaccine, and officer doesn't want that, so. We'll do.
So, if, if, if an animal's chipped and they're repeatedly picked up, that I.
So I really can cite them every time we pick up a dog.
I think the fourth line is.
But the option of it, or that becomes an option or is that mandatory?
So it, it would be an option. But, yeah, I mean, every time they pick them up and we're holding them, that's a citation, and, I mean, each day they don't come back and get them, I mean, they're.
They should have all the day.
Yeah, so we're, we're not going, these dogs that we are holding, you're not doing so for free. Uh, obviously, you know, getting in touch with these individuals down the road becomes an issue when they're showing a citation, but it will be on file.
Which hopefully, once we start getting enforcement, we pick up and people are on notice, they'll keep their dogs.
So is there anything you see that would benefit to starting? Keep it there?
No.
And I know it happened six months ago, I don't know if we still have a craft onboard, exactly, it's up to me.
Well, it's why it isn't available. And there's also now, there's a low-cost vet clinic at, um, Bots Dogs, so that's an option they have to do. That vet would be, this, I mean, you know, a few weeks ago, um.
Then, then you'd be a volunteer or?
I don't think it's a full-on, cause I need that, I don't do them, that's.
About the server.
That's a good question, but I don't have an interest yet. Uh, the way that Dr. Green talked to me, like, wouldn't be a big deal, I, I don't know what it was.
I think saying, to serve on the board is voluntary, that would be paid for services to the, to the.
The government.
So like he's on the board as an advisor, but then he gives eighty dollars on the time.
So we have to contract with that.
And it is possible if the police partner gets certified to do, use the name here. That's an additional process we can do. I mean, we'll consider coming up and running.
Just slow that a bit.
Yeah, you stop the O two.
But that's more cost effective.
It is not cost effective. It's cheaper. I think, I think the medicine is like 50 dollars a vial as opposed to a dollar a dog. But it does require it's controlled substance and has to be kept in the safe, has to be documented, all of those things. That is something that we can consider once we kind of feel out how this works.
You have any questions on that? That's the biggest issue to be asked.
Is citation different from a loose dog versus a loose dog that bites somebody? Or is it a same?
So if there's a dog bites, then we could motion to have the dog declared a dangerous dog. And that would be immediate seizure of the dog regardless of whether it was in or out of fits. And then that would be a separate holding and process and then an additional couple hearings and closer in time. So yeah, so it would be a different.
And there's like a one free bike over and once they've bitten, then they're on notice.
Yes.
It's a criminal, potential criminal liability for the owner. If the animal bites a second.
And it destroys the same.
All right, resume our questions and we'll move on to 14. Discuss, consider, take possible action on a strategic plan for the city of Army with citizen input such as new can be served. This was basically for long term planning. I know we've got a lot of planning. But, you know, issues like what type of development are we trying to incentivize or disincentivize? Like, we want to have, I've heard a lot of people see new developments like on Fisher, you know, on the Tina in 6004 saying, we don't want that. Let's look like little mini houses or garages, density or. And so I know what we wanted to be did a long time ago was, because you're right, people don't sit on surveys, whatever. We did like neighborhood, we moved like right lane and we had a right lane meeting and we got everyone to hold their neighbors. And we had, I think, a better success than we did. We divided the city up into five or six. And we asked that kind of input, like, what do you as residents want us to do? Do you want us to build a, you know, expand the park or would you rather have a taco truck location? Or remember last time, we had a bunch of people wanted that equestrian center, which I would have never thought of. We didn't have a plan to do it, but you know, that type of stuff. In other words, instead of guessing what people want, you know, kind of probing them, asking, reading the question, you know. Would you rather have this? We have so much money. We should, would you rather pave the roads or build the fancy welcome to the army side? And then use that as kind of a, a planning book for the next two years or the next four years. Or some things we, you know. And I don't think we've done that in a while because we've been working on the things that people wanted, you know, four, five, six, seven years ago. Like the zoning in place, getting rid of the GM and things like that, getting the animal control facility up. And so we're winding some of those things up, but it might be time to go out and find them again. Hey, what do we envision the city the next five years, for example? What should we be looking for? So that's kind of the idea. Have any input on that or? We put a sign up like, like meeting on right lane for a week or two and we'd have a date. We did a lot of. All right. Well, I'd like, I'd like to see us do it. If there's objections, maybe take a bunch of habits, see administrator. Make a plan to get big dates, maybe four to six weeks out. Find the neighborhood, a small budget, maybe buy a sign, maybe print up signs to let that neighborhood know we're going to have a meeting. And then. Sure. Yeah, we can get a central location. Not every neighborhood has a, you know, like, yeah, yeah, yeah. But sometimes it'll be less, like if we're on water wars, that's why we're here. I know we, like Alamo River, we would use their, their, uh, Bridge Press might have a place. But it was just a lot of people. Yeah, there's a lot of people in the main location. All right. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I would do that motion.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All right, all favor. All right, Kerry's. Agenda item 15, discuss and consider and take possible action to adopt property tax exemption by ordinance for the city of.
So the appraisal district sent me an email that if the city is going to have any city exemptions, we need to have them approved and submitted by July first. So if y'all want to do it, like, that's what you can do an additional homestead. I don't know if you could still do the over 60 fire or the disabled exemptions as well. I'm not sure exactly what all exemptions are available, but I thought I should.
Well, I was in some matter. We talked about it the other day, that the government could sign a deal that increased the homestead exemption, but how much?
I think it's 140,000 dollars. And then, so if we could adopt by ordinance, an extra, I know it used to be 5,000 dollars the city could do. I don't want to increase. But it would be an extra in addition to the city, other states. But I mean, that's up to you.
We had this discussion years ago and I remember we came to the conclusion not to give individual exemptions. So we could cut taxes for everybody. Because when we create different classes of taxpayers and there's people that don't pay tax or pay very little and other people that pay more. It was hard for us to do what we achieved, to eliminate property or keep them as low as possible. And so I would be of the opinion that we don't give individual, now some are statutory, like the disabled veteran, nothing we can do about it's federal. You get an exception. The homestead is a state. We can't do anything with that. We can add a bit to it.
Yeah, something you can add to it particularly from, so if y'all wanted to add to it.
But I would be of the opinion that we don't give any exemptions. Instead, let's cut taxes or eliminate the property tax again. For everybody and keep everybody in that same boat. So our seniors are like, we want lower taxes and our veterans want lower taxes and our people with young kids, they want lower taxes. Everybody has a good, especially this economy where it's, people are starting to hurt.
They already paid so much. We're okay.
We have, but like we have people with kids, young families with kids and they're paying the full rate because they don't get over, either they're not a civil veteran. And I think we want to be in a position where we can cut it for everybody. And if we carve out extra for someone, then it's less to distribute across the board.
We're going to do that. We need, we need property taxes, correct? We like to.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and you know. You see, Mr. The, it was some other place that they were like percentage points. We went to the lowest because the grown up city has that money and we don't have businesses. So we have no, no property taxes. I mean, it wasn't like a big business.
We have more dollars than we ever have. I mean, if we have a 1.4 million dollar budget, our budget is. And so it's two sides of the coin. If you don't spend 1.4 million, you don't have to tax 1.4. So one of the things that I would like to see this by the side, let's see if we can do. Because we can get to it because that's a benefit that we all enjoy, right? Everybody, and it's very unique, right? Most cities don't have the fiscal restraint to provide that to our residents. And, you know, I get people in my office all the time saying, I want to move to the army because there's no property tax. And they, they're always, oh, that's obviously 16, it's the wrong, you know, army. And I'm like, oh, man, we didn't get it. And so there's a tremendous benefit because every, every dollar that we don't take away from our residents goes back into their daily budget. And most of our residents, to be honest, are on face state loans, they're retired. You know, we've got a large number, a large, by half of our residents are low income. They live in, they live in Ridge Press and places like that. Where if you take a hundred dollars, that's coming out of their prescription budget, that's coming out of the food budget. You know, it's not like it's just scheming off the top. So I just think we need to be very cautious with what we take.
But they don't pay property tax.
They pay it indirectly. They raise rents. Yeah. Renters pay property tax because the renter doesn't, the owner doesn't need it.
The owner pays the tax.
Well, technically, if you raise the rent to cover it.
Rent.
So the rent is paid.
That's unfair deal of the human boss.
I know, but I don't know. I know very few landlords just said, I'll keep the tax increase. They don't be that. They raise rents. And that's the reality. And you can ask them to do that, but they have to have an obligation. The reality is going to be if we raise taxes, people might. So at a risk rest, I should offer last year, people were upset. I think they raised this 50 dollar flat. And talking to the owner, who was, that's passed through because of.
Yeah, but that depends. We affect the owner and we need to pay 20, 30,000 dollars a year. That's okay. That will help the city try to get rent, the real tax.
Well, what I'm saying is, we do tax the owner, say, 20 or 30,000, but he raises the rents 20, 30,000. And those are the people that have hardest time paying it. So we need to be mindful of that, that if we're going to, if we're going to do that, that we're making our city less affordable every time we pass a rule or require a permit or those types of taxes. I know we're getting a lot off board. That's a bigger, bigger deal. But as far as individual exemptions, I would say, I would cautiously be, I would say we should avoid them. So that we can make the biggest across the board tax cut we can when we adjust the budget. Because if we offer more to just a small group, then we're going to have to come up with even more to drop it down. Yeah, I think that's. Right? And then we'll get the budget. We'll work on the budget side and see how we do. All right. So we're not going to take any action on. All right. Agenda item 16, discuss, consider, take possible action to contract with E. Lynette Hester for accounting services.
Okay, so my clerk has been accepted into the Toyota baby program, so she's leaving next month. Her yearly salary is a little more than 29,000 dollars plus requirement plus self insurance. And so Lynette has done city finances and been a court administrator for many years. She's recently left city, city work and started her own consulting business. And so if we have her come in one day a week to do our affiliations, finances, would basically be like a contract finance director. One day a week would be approximately 15,000 dollars for the year. So it would be less than I'm paying my clerk. And so I would not fill that clerk position. If y'all did that. Because my, my master's degree is administration. I'm not finance. I mean, I've had to come in and learn what I've done. Lynette is familiar with our accounting system. It's government plan accounting. It's not normal bookkeeping. When we brought a bookkeeper in before, she did not understand government finance. It's a whole different language. So. Y'all would consider that, like, my time, you know, 50 to 60% of it is spent on the finances. So we do have a, we're keeping line item for the rest of 2025 that I could use for her. And then she can slide into a clerk position and not fill the clerk position.
So we paid, we paid the clerk what, 20,000?
Approximately 29,000.
And how much do you pay for insurance?
Well, the insurance is budgeted 30 dollars a month. Retirement is 7% at a two to one rate.
7% of?
Salary, 7% of 21,000. The city makes a 61,000. And then this year's percentage is 9.45. What's your mark?
2,300. 37,000. So for all 37,000, then this would be 15,000 a month?
No, it would be, so she did one day a week. So the line item that I have for the rest of 2025, I think she could come in and we could do everything figured out and reconciled. And then after that, all in a year, one day a week. And so the contract is for 37 dollars an hour, which is much cheaper than our previous bookkeeper that we got coming. It would be, one day a week would be 15,390 dollars for the year to come in and handle finances. And I talked to her about the audit and she knew exactly, because some things were not balancing. She, she told me exactly where to go to look, to find what was going on. And she understood all of that finance stuff that I. I'm not finance.
Should be an independent contractor.
Should be an independent contractor too, I guess.
Is that something that we have to bid out or can we?
No, I'm just going to answer the professional.
Is there any other? Needs that the assistant part does?
I mean, court, we all do courts. Her primary job is court.
So we do the court. If we don't, we may be, that's how we eliminate our position.
Yeah. This lady is also the former, she's the former court administrator. She would be able to help us come in and get all that stuff set up too. But Jennifer, Jennifer and I should cover the workload. If 50% of my time is not spent on finance, that brings me up to do other things.
What is the card?
July. She hasn't put in her notice yet, but she, she got accepted to the program and I think her orientation started, started moving July.
Seems to be like a net save.
And if we produce favorable, which reduces our work response. So.
Do we put a cap not to exceed 50,000?
Well, it's 5,390 dollars.
Right. Sorry. Not good seat. 50,300 and then 50 dollars.
Well, plus the, plus the spike, like, I have a line item we have not used yet for 2025. So I would like for her to come in for like maybe a week just to kind of get everything squared away, get us, get us a custom, yeah. So, but, so that would, that line item has like 20,000 dollars.
How about, okay, I want to be the contractor, no more than 22,000 for the rest of June, this is our July first. A 12 month agreement, not to exceed 50,000.
So 20,000.
Oh. 22,000 Chinese. Okay, I'm sorry. Did you make that motion?
Make a motion?
Did you make that motion? Will you make a motion?
I will. I do make a motion. Then we honor. Lynette Hester for accounting services.
Uh, real second. We wrote down the limits, right?
Yes.
All right, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Let's have it. Kerry's. Change the item 17, discuss and consider possible action to purchase building sign.
At the last meeting or the meeting before the last meeting, they all told me to look into signage for the buildings. And then Mayor came in and one of the first ones was brought up. So.
Yeah, because you got to do that smart account. They all have a name. We definitely have signed those, that, we need a building.
Lettering.
There is too much to complete here. I want my name.
It would, I mean, it would cost less if we just put the letter in, right, versus a sign or something?
Well, this, the four by eight sign is 635 dollars. Well, this, the four-by-eight sign is six hundred and thirty-five dollars. If y'all want me to look into lettering, I can do that, I, I just look for quotes for having a sign installed.
I don't, I don't, it would look more elegant if it's just lettering, very, um, or, or, it might, it might be less, it might be more.
I was kind of wary about these colors, because the place had a design that seemed to me, but I took out, I heard about, took it outside and put it against the building, and against that blue, it's pretty vibrant, so it pops out really well. This brown color would not be brown, it would be gray, but she's out printed.
Um.
You get visuals ultimately.
I would remove the logo, I think we just need lettering. It doesn't cost you that much, it's a digital, it's like a digital print.
Yeah, so it's aluminum, it's point eight inch aluminum, and yeah, I don't think it would cost anything extra to have that taken off.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
If y'all want different colors, well, you know, it's your choice.
Y'all seen the, it's kind of red.
It is red.
Very red, white, passing around.
It pops out with that blue on the building.
Well, would it be a ten white lettering on the blue background?
I don't know, it's still visible from the street, though, you know, on blue.
No, 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 white, like, white on blue, I mean, there's no background. We have this letter.
Oh, you mean just a white sign?
No, no sign, it's lettering. Probably be more, because we have to have all the key.
That would probably be a minimal sign, but it probably costs more.
I don't know, I just want it to look.
Yeah, but we, we need to get it done, oh.
No, I don't.
How long we've been, how long we've been here?
I'd say forty inches, these sign, but if you're looking at it from...
Oh, yeah, no, our, our sign that said the court, on the, text that right way, that's a four-by-four sign, and you wouldn't know, sure, right, it looks tiny.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, I think it could be...
You want them bigger?
Bigger, yeah.
Yeah, it'd kind of be a big sign.
Because this is a, this is a four-by-eight, this, this one is a quote for four-by...
Like a little big logo, that's nice.
It's how big you want it.
I would say look for, you know, I mean, we could, we could, we could, uh, if it costs more, we can eliminate some of the verbiage. Like, I think if it just said, "Barnaby City Hall," or, or Barnaby Municipal Building, or, I mean, I don't know, it's a digital sign, it's got to be a little smaller, how do you do?
But you want it bigger.
Yeah, like a three, one, two, one letter. So if you're a block away, it said Barnaby, you know, City Hall, maybe that's how we can afford Barnaby City Hall.
I can ask that.
So instead of four, eight, eight, sixteen?
What, eight by twelve?
Yeah.
So what, eight by sixteen?
I think the digital letter would look better.
I can, I can ask.
Just find out if it's, if it looks... And we can have a present for adoptive letters.
Sponsorship.
Sponsor a letter. Now, maybe the animal control, well, I guess you gotta figure out the overall, so they look the same, but that one could be obviously smaller. It looks like a car station.
Yeah, and everybody, yeah, nobody finds it.
Okay, bring it back to the digital letters.
I can acquire it. Y'all want to give me approval?
I'm saying blue.
Can you, y'all?
I would say white to contrast with the blue, with the, the building blue. If it was white, maybe with like a blonde halve on.
Six hundred and thirty. Y'all want to get me approval to purchase it once y'all like it in the morning? Or do y'all want to wait until next week?
It's pretty bad, naked for it.
You can, you can give them.
Not good, see?
We could call a little, we could give you the, five lines.
Thousand dollars.
Y'all want to give me footage?
Yeah.
Oh, that, uh, it's kind of like, is it, is it possible to have like this zooming, like, um, like, hide it like that, or?
Zooming?
Yeah.
Zoom.
Zoom.
Uh, no, not more than at least a forum, I mean, the third one should be on Zoom.
What about, uh, okay, uh...
No, they're not emailing each other.
Public forum?
Public chat, y'all can do it, the public chat on the right side, they can do that.
We need to have a confer.
Yeah, not many people do that.
Yeah, but if you're like, hey, can we put this on the agenda, and public can see it, so.
Yeah. Just one exception.
Alright, we'll come back with individual lettering options. I have a special meeting. Eighteen, discuss, consider, take, take possible actions to update the signers on the city's accounts that they contribute.
I need to remove the previous mayor out of the room here. And I admit to do so.
So who are, who would be the authorized signers to do that?
The president. Yeah, no, I am not. No, no, I want to.
Yeah, okay, um, we need to discuss it. All of your kind of motion to change the old mayor to be mayor?
Yeah, we need to, okay, motion that, that, uh, change the new mayor, sort of, maybe, thank you, something.
Remove Katie, you know.
Yeah, remove, thank you.
Okay, there are a motion, all favor say aye? On that, do you have the council anywhere else? And are they up to date with their, their reinsurance?
We just checked them.
Nineteen, discuss, consider, and take possible action to designate the mayor for attempt, and designate the administrative duties of Commissioner Place One, Sammy Martinez, and Commissioner Place Two, uh, Lunkus Monju.
Currently, Raymond has been Police Department at City Hall, and Sebastian has been Public Works at Municipal Court.
Change that?
I, I, I keep that.
Thank you, okay. And...
Sammy for Brooklyn.
He still wants to be the mayor for that?
Yeah.
Do we have, we do, we have to have an election for mayor for that?
No, I mean, it's, you can pump it.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a electoral, but...
We can, just to be safe, it's a new term, I'm just, yeah.
Alright, uh, I'll entertain a motion to elect Sammy Martinez to be mayor for that. For the twenty-twenty-five, we said, second. Yeah. Make a second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Do we need to make a motion on the administrative duties, between the longer?
Definitely.
Because that's a big thing.
It's just, it's just a structure, it's the way to do it, we'll do that, last two.
Okay, Agenda Item twenty, discuss, consider, take possible action regarding the city logo, the city seal, the city flag, and the city slogan, and all matters related, there.
So y'all disagree, and I don't want to be in the middle of it, so y'all would figure it out, so I have to steer direction on what to do, I'll do this.
I don't, okay, yeah, uh, I would mention to Valerie that I really don't like the script, Texas with the Barnaby script logo. I was asking to...
You like eagle?
I like eagle, I was...
I don't like eagle, I do not like eagle, because they're like, do with Barnaby. I already read what it was all about, that you were a band company, would take over a country and take two countries, and one, it would look this way.
Little make believe, but I mean, I'm very...
Well, definitely, yeah, so everyone knows, it was, Count Von Army was from the Austria-Hungarian Empire, and the Austria-Hungarian Empire's symbol was, you had eagle, one for Austria, one for Hungary, because he was a captain of that empire, it was to represent him, and we thought our, our community is very much Mexican-American, we both had eagles, you have American eagle, you have Mexican eagle, so we decided it was symbolic of our community, that was the original intent.
One phrase in south, and one phrase in north.
Yeah, Austria-Hungary is one east, one west, I guess, one north, one south. We do a forehead eagle.
I do get a lot of...
We're from America, and I'll support the American flag, so.
Oh, no, pardon.
But, right, and, uh, wouldn't have a question, I'll be doing here.
Well, again, it was, it was supposed to symbolize our namesake, Count Von Army. And then the five-pointed star is the Davidoff flag, which was in Republic of Texas, a lot of our families fought in that, that was the first flag of Texas, uh, and the logo was God of Texas, which was, uh, it comes from Stephen of Austin. So the normal salutation when you sign a letter during the Spanish, it was, "Yo soy de la India," when Mexico got its independence, they would say, "Yo soy de la libertad," liberty. And when Austin was in prison, uh, that they suspended the Constitution, we would have a protest, he signed a letter, and he writes it back home, to Texas police here in Barnaby, and he scratched out "Yo soy de la," which was normal, and he wrote "Yo soy de la Texas." A lot of people say that's when he, you know, had the birth of the Texas independence, right, and that comes from our, our heritage here, and it was the letter written, that's from the Barnaby, so. I'm not saying you have to like it, I just wanted to explain to everybody that, the idea with the symbolism, that most of it, or all of it, is supposed to be tied here to our history. But you don't have to like it, I, I don't, I don't like the script one, I think it's very, I think Somerset has exactly the one, or very similar to the city of Somerset, so. That would be...
We would just name another script.
Well, I, I think if we're, if we're gonna have a logo, if we are going to change it, I think it needs to be reflective of our community. Right, our history, our heritage, uh...
We're all immigrants. We're all immigrants.
Yeah, yeah.
You can't think of the American.
Well, some of us, some of us, our family fought for Republic of Texas.
I know.
But we're not immigrants, we created this country.
That's fine.
And then they voted to join the United States, and so, uh, you know, maybe this is the kind of thing that we should probably, when we do our five-year plan with residents, we can ask for it, you like it, if you want to change it, uh, and just compete that. Because we're not going to decide it here, and I think if we're going to change it, I would say let's do something new versus, you know, if we don't like one, and others don't like the other, at least do something new, uh, versus, you know, fourteen months, I mean. Okay, alright.
That'll benefit input from the...
Yeah, we'll get input from the residents, and we'll, we'll bring it back in a month or two.
That way you don't do like the part, you know, whatever you want to do.
Well, uh, yeah, well, well, what I'd like to do is, is get some citizens, well, represent the citizens, so. See, if they want to change whatever, or ideas that they may have, and then we'll bring it back, and we're not good with that. Uh, there's no other discussion on that, then we'll discuss, consider, take possible action regarding an emergency warning sign, sign?
I got some information on the kinds of sirens that are available, I asked for quotes, but they have not, since I have no idea what it costs, but Commissioner Huzmon did ask me, you know, what it would take to get an emergency siren for the city to...
Would that be for like a tornado?
Tornado storms, um, if they, we need to evacuate, those kind of things.
Heat waves, so.
Heat wave, that's every day. They're gonna be like... Oh, yeah.
We'll discuss the state as well.
Yeah.
The sirens, you'd advise people to, hey, take cover, or be alert.
Right, check your proximity, something's going on, right?
And so to, like that, we can always look on the video of the construction.
Got you.
Yeah.
So, so obviously, there should be a protocol around these situations.
Well, there is, we had one in Natalia, and so, like, me as chief, I had control of it, so if it needed to be set off, I would be the one who set it off. And it, there was like a whole emergency management process to it, it wasn't just, I want to set the siren off, it had to be, it had to come from, like, they, they can't be judged.
Did you ever have to?
Um, not a lot is there, they, they have used it recently, but not a lot is there.
It's the length of course, you know?
I, I don't know, I did ask for quotes, I haven't gotten anything back.
Is there like a...
What, what do you go?
It needs to be forty-five to fifty-five feet in the air.
So we would need a tower?
We would need a tower, or they sell, like, these, these kind of sirens, the ones in Natalia, the ones in Lio, they're, they're on a water tower, we don't have a water tower, um, but the ones that I gave you, these are the kind that are just posted on, like, you know, just the lighting rod. You know, fifty-five, but, you know, it's, it's possible, I know there's an antenna up there, um, I, I, it would have to be checked to see if it's stable and possible to hold, but I don't know the weight.
That would be audible, for our whole city to do that, that house.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's different things that we could, we could pick, and then some of them are integrated to where the siren goes off and hits the cell phone through the air again as well, so. There's more automation to it now, there are new specs.
Does it have to be on a generator, or is it electric?
Well, we have a generator at that building. It's on a, like, a, it's a...
It's operating, all right, twenty years.
Yeah, so we lose, we lose power in that building, the diesel generator, our mess, we keep some...
Well, it's not an engine, it works.
Alright, uh, Twenty-two, discuss and consider, take possible action to reschedule the August twenty-twenty-five regular meeting. That's a good one.
I will be in country, I will be at country.
Now, we just moved the, the, the day up one week, that's still, that's still complicated.
My, my slide is still not on the chart. Will they come back, or will they come back to the, on the, the following?
The nineteen?
Nineteen.
Okay, so actually, we just moved the meeting, we didn't have a problem, now we did, we moved to the second Thursday, right? So would you be able to, the third, the twenty-first of August?
Yeah.
Alright, uh...
You're not only using this, it's longer than this.
To a Thursday?
Are you available in them, don't you have a fire ring?
I do, but if it's one, if it's a one-day Tuesday, I just don't want to visit every month, you know, that's fine, I mean, uh... Want to make a motion then to move the August meeting to the twenty-first, Thursday, twenty-first? Okay.
We're moving to, uh, August, to the twenty-first.
We have a meeting, uh, motion, we have a second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Agenda Item twenty-three, discuss, consider, take possible action to amend ordinance, twenty-eleven dash eighty-five, designate the city holidays.
Uh, Mayor, as you know, today is Juneteenth, and you had mentioned, um, federal holidays. And so my, my question is, do we want to include a caveat where if we have a regular meeting on holiday week, do we want to change that meeting?
Right.
We can.
Well, I'm just, it comes up.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, but it's a relatively new holiday, and so we, you know, we, most people, they have stopped observing Columbus Day, and changed for, I don't know, they want to keep adding holidays.
Do you want to change Columbus Day for Juneteenth?
For Juneteenth? Unless there's another...
In next year?
Yeah, or moving forward?
Moving.
I want to work on Christmas. The only other one would be Barnaby Day, which is very close to Memorial Day, or consolidate, celebrate Barnaby Day off Memorial Day. But, uh...
And, and it would be easier if it's a holiday week, just to not have the meeting on that week, instead of having holidays.
Well, the second happens for seven years, right, Juneteenth won't be on a Thursday, for, for years. But we could, we could do a policy, a policy that if a regular scheduled meeting is on a holiday, that we do it the following day, or the day before.
Because I think it's going to be posted on when they leave on holiday. You know, and you, you missed a couple weeks. and you missed it for a week.
Put that...
Or we can leave it.
Or we could not observe the meeting, but whatever you want, it's just a federal holiday, even if you follow on a federal holiday.
It's just three days.
Right. Okay, he might pull this, if he, if he ever stays alone, okay. Alright, uh, move on to agenda item twenty-four, discuss, consider possible action to establish an animal shelter advisory committee.
So I gave you guys the statute for that, where we need, uh, the governing body of municipality in which the animal shelter is located shall appoint an advisory committee to assist in complying with the requirements of this chapter. Committee must be composed of at least one licensed veterinarian, one municipal official, one whose duties include the daily operation of the shelter, and one representative from an animal life welfare organization. Committee has to meet three times a year.
Okay, but we have these people.
Well, the chief would represent the daily operation, um, I could represent the city, or one of these could represent the city, your choice. Um, I did ask, um, Marchbanks if they were interested, I haven't gotten an answer. There's another rescue on Austin. Um, I, I haven't asked that lady, I can, um, and then I did speak to Dr. Green, and they were open to it, it's been some months ago, so...
So, so what do we need? Do we need to, we don't have any much of points right now.
And that's part of the...
No, just, yeah.
Deal for having, no?
Yes.
So we want to be operational, okay? Can we take a five-minute recess, our poll back to three?
Well, we're gonna have to go to executive session.
Okay. Let's break this back after executive session, and then we'll break our poll back to three, take some back into the poll. Okay, uh, so we will... Skip to agenda items, uh, twenty-five and twenty-six, or...
Sarah, not yet.
Executive session for our commissioners, uh, what sections are we going to forward?
It's, uh, some form registered opportunities, potential...
Okay. Alright, it is eight-twenty-three, we go, we go there, we have fifty levers.
Well, that's one of the books in there, we have a little library, and, and it's...
We'll try to squeeze in there.
So...
Okay, uh, coming back for our next day. We're on executive session, it's eight thirty-five P M. Yeah, eight, eight thirty-five P M. On agenda uh twenty-three, I'll entertain a motion to direct the city administrator as the best detective tenant. You have a second? All favors say aye. Motion carries. I forgot to go back. I'll call her in a little bit. What agenda I'm seeing for? You have a question? I'm actually at the Bonomi City Council meeting, the whole town is listening. We were wondering if Dr. Green would sit with someone to sit on our animal advisory committee, animal shelter advisory committee. Can we put it on the agenda? Alright. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Is it yes? Go ahead.
I don't know about March because I didn't answer, but I know um Laura O'Malley, she should be with chairman.
Can we call her? So we need, so we have Dr. Green. Then we need one from the city, right?
One from the city and the chief.
And who? You're one of the?
Yeah, I would do that.
Uh. Should we add, should we add one person?
This is a minimum, you can add.
Do we want to post that or does somebody? Because I do have.
Who?
And that gives us one, two, three, four, five. Alright, I'll entertain a motion then that we appoint uh city administrator Valerie Knapp, uh our uh chief of police Sepeda, uh Dr. Green.
There is a.
I'm sorry.
Ruben, sorry.
My first. Uh Veronica Alphacere and Debbie Mayman, city uh uh Bonomi animal shelter advisory committee.
Motion.
You have a second? Uh all favors say aye. All votes say nay. Here. Uh uh updates regarding city business, musical parks, department, other matters today.
There are new court software rolling out, so we should be live and fully functional on June thirty.
Can you give us a little bit of that?
So currently all of our systems are separate, okay? So our payment system has to be manually entered into our info system and the tickets have to be manually entered into the system and 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 nothing talks to each other and it's very manually intensive. That's one reason that we needed so many court clerks. The new system is all integrated, so the ticket's going to go straight to the software. Um there will be a portal that an individual with a ticket can log into, they can see all the judges sending orders, they want a payment plan, they want deferred, they want to take driver's safety course. They can submit their requests, submit their supporting documents, it will come through the portal. We can see it, if it meets the judge's orders, we can approve it, if not, we can forward it to Jacob and Judge. It's supposed to increase payments by eighty percent because they get constant weekly reminders and so they're stayed off. Um it's it's more streamlined, it's got a little A I in it.
What about the old tickets?
Gonna be migrated, listed others. Um and then um so with that system, the payment system, they make a payment, it's gonna go straight into the court software and updates. It's it's not gonna be all fragmented, it'll be much more user friendly for, not only for us, but for the public as well. And it's taken incredibly long time. But like Jacob and Judge from their laptop at our office, they'll be able to log in and see court, so they won't have to necessarily drive over here to hand things to you. Like right now, we scan a lot of things. We scan a lot of files, we send to Jacob, and with the new system, all he's gotta do is go into the portal, so.
If we're able to actually, the one, the once a year trial, we'll be able to have more frequent trials instead of the ambiguous. We'll call you.
It should cut down on our show calls getting and all of that, so.
And it's cheaper, cheaper than.
Oh, yeah, so then the info, like to redo info, this will be fourteen thousand dollars. Um our initial startup on the court system, I want to say was like ninety-two. I don't think it was eleven-seven, I think that was the ticket software, but our yearly use of it is like twenty-seven hundred dollars, twenty-seven to thirty-six hundred dollars as opposed to fourteen thousand a year. And we get all the updates, we get all the training involved, we get unlimited accounts, we have licenses, it's much more user friendly than.
What about the legal? Yeah, go into.
Yeah, it's got a lot of. It's a custom software, so we have. And then anything we don't like, they will change the course, it's custom, we can modify it and all that.
You're like on the first season, you say that's not bad.
Alright, can we get our updates?
Um code enforcement training, my staff, my, well, myself, both public works, the police department, we trained, what, eight of us? We took a advanced code enforcement class, it was twenty bucks a person, it was through A C O D. A lot of good information, and then the the doctor that taught it is the director of code enforcement for the Texas Department of. It's it's not the Department of Code Enforcement, but basically what it is called, it's called. And um he gave us each a year of free training for code enforcement online, so. And then if we have a group in line with him, if we have any questions, if anything we need help dealing with, like he just keep on helping.
Any other updates?
Um I was wondering, uh, did the city hire a contractor to put grass on here and don't get too rough for the creative?
We can't answer directly, you can give an update on the draft.
They didn't have the grass, but around the city. Where? What happened with our practice? Just here and there.
Yeah. Uh yeah, okay, Jen, we gotta close the meeting in the booth.
Oh.
It's only due to.
Oh.
Any other updates?
Um I did get a quote for testing call from the city, just the city wanted to spray mosquitoes. Um if we sprayed the city, it would be eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Um I can get more quotes, I just got one in general, but it would be eight hundred and ninety-five dollars to spray the city um for mosquitoes. Uh the only caution is, we don't want to do it while it's still raining a lot of people, once it rains, it's gone. So just the F Y I on that.
You have to be careful with.
I I know, I know, it's kind of like a double edged sword, when mosquitoes are bad, but just something you think about.
Alright, any other updates? Alright, now, can I tell you about your adjourn? All favors? We are adjourned at eight forty-four P M. Your man. I had a partner.
We do need edge.
And your last name?
Ruben, Roberto.
Ruben.
I I'll just call you Ruben.
Okay, Ruben.
Let you know that, well, you know. As you know. But let you know.
See you again.
Where are you going? Where are you going? I'll pick up your good. And uh. Yeah.
You know. All of those.
And that, you got it, might have come down. So we have uh.
We're near.
She will be. Uh so you do your plan, and these are all the. Uh so they're kind of farm marshals, so we have primary university coordinators, so in case. Uh this is all there. I come along, I can get here, probably have. Uh so she, the old timers, the yearers, uh two-one-zero-three-three-six. And that's our. Just three-zero, uh three-three-six, three-zero-zero-four, and that's our chief. Uh and then, but who mainly handles the, like, the response, like, if you needed a response, that's usually the, that'd be chief. Oh, uh that might be. So. So uh.
No, this is what I've gained through the years.
Here, but why we have a tractor. I hope, because I'm asking you. Why isn't somebody else, why doesn't that pay somebody else, you have somebody. You have, you have a track right. And that's your.
And I just mean due to. The heart of panic that's all.
You hired him.
Hey, do you have a? Where was he? Huh? Wait. Alright, you have one move, you want this one to you?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I can use one. I got that. I'll be there. Oh, yeah, 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 there. Yeah, yeah.
I make most of them in. In the after, the act normally. But we're family. We come from. The.
Yeah.
So uh, yeah, that's gonna be.
You know, I did it this time with a duty, maybe next meeting, we can bring our back. Yeah, no. But I'll put it on agenda, I didn't do it, so I jumped again, but. I'll do it five minutes before I get in.
City bros.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Uh, T shirt. Yeah, uh uh, so they have a battery, she has a budget for, I forgot, I wanna show the fits to you, you can open five.
Well, this is. Where's this, where's that?
No, no, I was telling you, you're good at, you're buying stuff some.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yes. But yeah. Yeah. I gotta be neat so we can alternate. You know, that's something you can do, you can be, yeah, whatever you have. I wonder what they. Yeah, oh yeah.
Three or four thousand years old. It's only. But this is three or four thousand. This year of, you know, a lot of old people back then, at least they were ancient Indian, this is a. From ancient, this is three or four thousand years, here in Long, we have these. When they can find them out there, I'm like, yeah, it could be, they're trying to find them. It's the same that we will find the whole area. And you'll find them in caves, at the right time, in some cave you'll find them. I find the apples, the big apples they use, with the hammer. But they have like. Pen on. That was it, it was old.
Oh, you. You ever been there? Oh, really? And so probably. This way, yeah. It's on both sides, like, either side better, it's got better chute.
This side is.
Yeah, they have boats on both sides, but like the poles are kind of like facing in, so if you go to the inside, you can see the boat. Would that school? They have like a hundred ways to charge, you gotta pop and blow and air balloon and the tunnels, the boat. Bungee jump.
It may need a smaller machine, it may just be, it may need a smaller.
Yeah.